Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is to consider that agenda. Are there any corrections or changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three. Agenda Item Number Three is to consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting as well as a work session. Both were held on September 25th. So the council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections?
I so moved minutes.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Steve to approve the minutes of both meetings from September 25th. We'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Four. Agenda Item Number Four, consider the approval, or consider the award of proposals for the track skid loader for the wastewater department. Glenn, I'll let you introduce and then Bob.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bob M. Moore is here as a wastewater superintendent to discuss, answer any questions that you have on the recommendation for the skids here. Bob?
Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We, after a couple of weeks ago, we brought this forward and there were some discrepancies and different issues with the purchase of the skid loader and the trade-in unit. So we went out and do all new proposals with three separate proposals for all the vendors to re-quote their machines on. So after the quotes came back in, Sterling Equipment and their proposal A was the best proposal for the equipment. That will be a trade-in with the street department skid loader and the street department will take our skid loader in exchange. Any questions?
Questions for Bob?
I move the recommendation.
Motion by Craig is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Bob.
Bob, thanks for doing that and thanks to all of the vendors that went through and did the work to re-quote that. I really appreciate it.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Five.
We don't see that very often.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Five is a consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda. They include, consider the authorization for a rental agreement between the city of Morehead and city of Marshall for the hazmat training trailer, consider and approve. The final certificate releasing running supply ink and the contract for private development, including the land purchase and business subsidy, as all the terms and conditions of the agreement have been satisfied. Consider the application for a temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for a Vera Marshall for an event that will be held November 15th. And then also then consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed or propose a separate discussion?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll move to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number Ten. Agenda Item Number Ten, consider the commercial and industrial special assessment policy. So the, this is, let me back up just a little bit. At the previous meeting, we had an assessment hearing and that assessment hearing was continued until October 25th. And the reason it was continued is because the policy was under consideration for revision. So tonight is not the hearing on that. That will be continued and that will be two weeks from tonight. Twenty-third. Twenty-third. Thank you for that correction. So tonight, the discussion really is on, is there going to be a change proposed to the current policy? And that has been under consideration, under quite a bit of work by our council Ways and Means Committee and they have a recommendation. So that's the agenda item for this evening. Before I turn to the council Ways and Means Committee, Sharon, I'll turn to you for any other introductory items.
Mr. Mayor and Council, in your packet is a proposed change to a procedure via the policy which would set a maximum amount of a special assessment for commercial and industrial. And my understanding is that the staff, as late as today, have been looking at the maximum assessment and different square footage and so forth. And so Public Works Director Olson will explain that in more detail. And then we can talk about options in terms of action as we go forward.
That I'll turn to the council Ways and Means Committee.
Okay, we, and just as the city administrator stated, we did meet and are making, not recommending a change to the policy, but we're making a recommendation to a procedural change for the maximum assessment, which really parallels the residential maximum that we have now. And it's based on the same square footage. I would say that we did review assessment policies from several other cities that turned out to be very similar to ours with a range of assessments that went from about 70% assessed to the property owner, up to 100% assessed. And in looking at that, we decided, which was very similar to what we have now, decided to include the procedural aspect, which puts a maximum or a not-to-exceed dollar amount to the property owners. I'll let Glenn Olson get into the actual calculations of that. Would, there is one thing I would point out that I see a little difference between your recommendation, where you address, and our original recommendation, which was everything to be based on a 9,350 square feet, which granted is an odd number as compared to the 10,000 square feet that you're putting in. But the reason for the 9,350, again, that was based on the court ruling a number of years back in residential, based on a value amount associated with an average lot that size. So we based it, our calculations off that. And I guess I turn it over to Glenn to go through the calculations and the procedure on how we determine that and then maybe discussion on the square footage that we use.
Glenn Olson, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor and John. The discussions came to be is how we would recommend going forward for future conditions for deciding what to use for those factors that we use. And the 9,350 was based on a very limited number of certain residential properties in town. It certainly is not the average size. And so we met with the assessing department too, had a very thorough analysis of the number of residential properties and the relative resident, square footage size. And if you can see this from there, this does show then the sort of a bell curve of numbers of properties with certain square footages in town. So we wanted just to make sure that we could reproduce what that number would be year after year after year. So what we did was we took the total properties in town and then we eliminated the highs and the lows, and specifically the highs, because we have some residential properties that are very large, four acres, three acres. We have several of them that are larger than what we consider an average residential size. So we took a look at the, all of the properties in the city and limited to them to those under one acre and then those under a half an acre. And between those two, it was somewhere between 9,500 and 10,500 square feet. And we just then used 10,000 square feet. And that's an arbitrary number, it seems to be, but it's the process here that's important to us, so that the process is reproducible. And if we establish that number based upon some criteria, and I'm not indicating that 10,000 should be the right one, but that was the best recommendation that we could come forward with all the information we got from the assessing department and our surface water management system that includes every residential property in the city. So that's where that number comes from. However, if you change that number, it's very easy then to put that number in the formula and derive that maximum assessment. So there's three things that we involved here. The average residential square footage of property. We use the width of the street as a factor. So if you had a wider street than the normal residential, you pay the factor times that for that width. The 10-ton divided by seven-ton required design parameters for the strength of the street, seven-ton for residential, 10-ton for industrial, commercial, and that was another factor. So if you take the total square footage of the entire commercial residential property, divided by the average residential, gives you a number. Let's say it's 10x. So then you take that number times the width factor, times the strength factor, and you come up with a maximum assessment. That, just so you are aware, that does not change the assessment that we do on a normal basis by the lineal front footage. We still use the lineal footage in the calculation of the assessment, but we use this calculation to assess, to set the maximum assessment for the property. So it's still based on the bigger frontage you have, the more you pay, up to a maximum. We also discussed, should that carry over from one year to the next or doing the assessment life of the project? And we said, well, it does for residential. It should be similar for commercial. So if in fact you're under the maximum special assessment rate established by the policy this year, but then next year or five years from now, you have another assessment policy on the adjacent street, then those totals should be related. It's not adding up the total, but the depreciable life of one goes down by a factor of 1/20th every year for 20 years. And then that gets added on to your current. So then you're still maxed out by that equation with some depreciation of the previous year's projects. That's what we do for residential now and that's what we're trying to propose, the same condition. So what I will say about this one, however, is that you have several alternatives. You can leave the special assessment for this project just the way it's always been calculated with the recommended special assessment spreadsheet that you've seen. Or you can use the recommended calculation for a maximum special assessment for this project and future projects by setting a policy adjustment. Or you can change it to whatever factors you deem necessary for future projects. So whether that's a 9,350 square feet or 10,000 square feet or 11,000 square feet, understanding that the higher square footage number that you take, the lower the maximum would be. I think maybe I'll stop at that spot for this one and have any questions that you might have on the proposal that came back from the Ways and Means Committee, knowing full well that the Ways and Means Committee used the 9,350 rather than 10,000. But that's a number that should be reproducible or established, just set a set number and we'll use that. But we tried to get that number as reasonable as possible and as reproducible as possible for future construction projects.
Thank you, Glenn. Sharon?
So I just want to add to that. As you are aware, we have objectioners to the assessment. Some of those were present at the Ways and Means Committee. There, in your packet, there was a follow-up letter from one of the property representatives and in discussions with them further, even after the work of the Ways and Means Committee on Wednesday, even after some of the discussion about changing square footage, is my belief that, and they can state it here themselves, that it's not, it's not something that would prevent them from contesting the assessment. I think they would still proceed. And so another option that could be considered is to consider booking at a, doing an appraisal of this particular project. You could do a preliminary appraisal to see how the assessments would go forward and are standing in this. And I think what needs to be stated, and I think for both parties, is that the basis for determining the special benefit, I don't know if the objectioners really have the quantifiable basis for what that would be. And I say, so I think with an appraisal, we would get some of that detailed information. It has a potential to avoid court. It could provide the city some strength in negotiations, if that's where we end up. And it could help set or determine the policy. Right now, it, you know, we're putting our best foot forward, but maybe we need some additional information through an appraisal. So that is an option that the council could consider with or without adopting the policy or this procedure on a maximum assessment. So I bring that forth as an additional option for the council to consider.
Just one additional thing. Thank you, Sharon, to add to that comment. If that was the route that we would go, the, as it would impact the current hearing that is open, we likely would not be able to have that assessment completed prior in two weeks. So the other consideration with that option would be delaying the certification of the assessments really to the following tax year. So.
Correct.
And it also probably would delay, and this is maybe not a bad thing, delay the second phase of this project, given the weather that has been encountered this fall. That may not be a bad thing to delay that for a year anyway. So. So there's a number of options, a number of choices the council has. One is stick with the current policy. The second would be to adopt the recommendation from the Ways and Means Committee, setting the maximum. And then a third option, and perhaps there's other variations of this, would be to get a project assessment and delay the certification of the assessments. Craig, you have commented.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have stated all along through this process that I've felt that because of the ruling that we got to do the basis for the maximum assessment on residential, and that's very helpful, and I think it makes the process very fair and predictable, I've contended that maybe that is, you know, isn't such a bad thing long-term. And I really like the idea of doing the project assessment and taking it down. So I'm very much in favor of delaying it for a year and doing this right. So that when we're done, we're complete. And it's something that, you know, if both of us are, both sides are a little bit unhappy, maybe that is where we need to be. But, you know, it's a tough thing to try to manage these and for us to be able to do them financially sound and still provide the quality that we want in these areas for the community, when you go into other communities that haven't been able to keep up with that, it's very telling. And it's like anything else, once we get behind that catch-up and recovery is even more difficult. So I'd rather take the time, do it right. It's a little bit painful between now and next year because we're going to have bond payments and stuff that are due that we're going to have to figure out. But I think it's well worth it to put this forward and do it right.
Glenn, and before I recognize Glenn Baricola, also want to recognize that Glenn has done a substantial amount of work as a member of the Ways and Means Committee. So thank you.
Okay. I guess I would say a couple of comments here. One is, whatever we do, I want us to be consistent. I don't want us to be treating one business better than any other business. And if we're going to delay this for a year, I would want us to not just get, I'm not necessarily the appraisal, but I think we need to look at the entire policy of what we're doing and look at other cities and see how they do it and come up with a new policy and implement that policy and then do the assessments. And if we're going to do appraisal, if that's what our new policy is going to be then, then so be it. But I want a consistent policy. And I know some cities do appraisals like every two, three years. They don't do it every year. And, but I would want us not just to take care of this particular situation, but come up with a long-term policy change. And I would want the Ways and Means Committee and the LNO Committees to get together and, or work on coming up with new policy if it's needed. But I think we need to, like I said, I don't want to just address this situation. I want to think long-term and come up with a whole new policy if it's needed. And maybe what we have is just fine, maybe it can be improved. But I'd like to have us look at all of it. The second part here is from Carla. If we do delay this, what is the cost of the city? And how does delay benefit the owners right now that are getting the improvements? Do they get a year's free interest? Or how does that all work? So that, again, I'm concerned about fairness. I'm also concerned about the cost of the city.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First of all, this is not the first project that has had a delay in special assessments. And so the special assessments will just be one year further out. So yeah, they get the benefit of a brand-new street without paying assessments, but it doesn't affect their interests at all. So whatever is determined to be their assessment role, that'll be certified and if they determine to pay it right upfront or with interest over this given years. As far as the bond is related, I will need to do more figuring, but we'll look at other avenues to pay our first payment on our bond.
So at this point, we really don't have a dollar, exact dollar amount or close dollar amount as to what the cost would be to the city?
I was just trying to figure it out based on the current street assessments. If you divide that over 15 years, you get about below $35,000 that plus than interest that I didn't factor in.
And I want to explain too, that when we came up with this maximum amount, it wasn't meant to be a new assessment policy for assessing property. It was to be a safeguard to make sure that there was a maximum that property owners didn't pay more than a maximum. So, and we had a short period of time to get something done. I mean, we didn't have months and months that we could use to address this problem. And so it was, you know, we felt it was a good solution that we could implement in a short period of time. But evidently, we still need to look at our overall assessment policy as to how we do it and whether or not we have appraisals. And if so, how often we have appraisals and all those details need to be worked out. And it could be a long process. And certainly, I agree with other people that we want to make sure we do it right.
And I think the comment was made about other communities. I think the other thing we recognize is that a lot of our communities look at what our practice is and follow us. So what we do probably, you know, will set some standard as for other communities to follow also. So another reason to be sure to do it right. John?
Just a couple of questions, probably over to Sharon Hansen. One is, do you have about a length of time involved in doing an actual appraisal? We talked a little bit about a preliminary appraisal and appraisal and then probably the costs involved in those.
So I think there's two different tracks for this. And the first one would be kind of a preliminary assessment on the project as a whole. And I don't know the timeline on that. That would, that would be just looking at the assessments, the feasibility study for the initiation of the reconstruction and then the market value data from the assessor's office. And I think we could from that get kind of a general idea, the city's position on the assessment. If we went through a complete property per parcel appraisal, it could take four months. And that's likely because the appraisers that we contacted are probably really good at what they do. And that's their workload at this point. The, obviously, we can contact other firms. This particular firm that I contacted today was the same firm that worked on our previous litigated special assessment. So there's some history there.
And that price was $5,000 per appraisal, per residential parcel. And that was the.
And that was the, so, I mean, that's the dollar figure 10 years ago.
The quote I got for the complete appraisal was, is approximately $10,000.
Um, I, you know, I've had conversations with Sharon about this. Dave and I had a conversation about this about a week and a half ago. I think doing appraisal would be good. But I think, Dave, you're back there, I think it'd be good for him to explain what kind of appraisal this is, so we understand. Because, you know, some people think, well, it's a res, you know, on appraisal, you get an appraiser, but it's not. So I think, Dave, it'd be good if, since you're here, to explain actually what's all involved in this appraisal, so we, as us, I, I understand, not actually explain it to me, but so the public understands what is in, in this appraisal.
A person, city assessor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So when you're looking at an appraisal for special assessment purposes, they're going to be looking at that specific benefit. That's, that's the, the, the value that they're trying to extract from that appraisal. It's far removed from the scope of an assessor. Assessor has no realm in the special assessment world, so that would be an outside fee appraiser. And they would look at sales in Marshall, various communities, properties that have sold on improved streets, unimproved streets, and they'll use their data to try and extract that benefit value, so.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
And I think it's good to go with an appraisal, give us, not, you know, like Glenn said, every couple of years, you know. I think to set our new policy, we need an appraisal at this point to see where we're at and go from there. Now, do we do it, you know, I, I don't think every couple of years, but you do it now, maybe 10 years, take a look at it again, because it is very expensive. This, this appraisal is going to get very expensive. And we can't, if we start adding that on top of every street job, we're going to have a room full of people complaining about their property taxes going up. This all has to be paid for somehow.
I just a question back to Dave on that. Now, to say, it was obviously difference between an appraisal and an assessment. You said the appraisal is going to be based on property sales. Are they going to look at other communities in Marshall? Because realistically, if we're only looking at industrial land sales, there isn't much here to do a comparison on.
The ones that I've reviewed have gone out to six to eight different communities. These appraisal firms almost carry their own data bank of sales, so it could be, you know, St. Cloud, Litchfield, Wilmer, Mankato, quite a variety of communities that they're going to reach out to, to get these different comps.
Thank you, Dave. Any other question for Dave, as long as she's up here? Sharon?
I was just going to say on the, on the appraisal, we're, we're aware of, when we looked at other city policies, and Councilman Baricola pointed this out, that some policies do random or sampling. There's another city policies, what's, which says that the city may or may not do an appraisal, and that's their policy. So they, they don't commit to it. I think if you get kind of a good baseline, you can, you can, with this particular appraisal, hopefully, we can move forward with future projects. One of the things that I do want to add to, and it's, it's, the, the city taking on an appraisal, we're, we're, we're kind of doing a step ahead of a more formal process. And I communicated this, and it wasn't to be mean to the, to the objectioners, but, you know, the burden is on them to prove that the assessment is wrong. But at the same time, you know, we're, with the recommendation to do an appraisal, we're willing to kind of take a look at, you know, where we, where we sit by, by getting some good data. And that's why this option is being presented, even though, you know, legally, it wouldn't have to fall on us to do that.
Greg?
Yeah, Dave, thank you, Sharon, because that's kind of where my point is. I'm, I'm looking at this and, and looking at how the residential one went. We, the appraisal ended up having to be done anyway. I'd rather be proactive, do this in a, in, in more of a cooperative piece. I think we're both after the same end, to get equitable numbers, to do the projects right, and to get them paid for right. And, and I mean, I think we, we need to take the time, I think we need to do it. I so much appreciate what the, what the Ways and Means Committee has done. There's been a lot of really good information brought out. I think that's a big piece of how we get there. I'd like to be able to get to this where we can get a, you know, sometimes it's nice to have the court decision, because that's good and binding for all of us. So sometimes that, you know, litigation isn't bad. Hopefully, we don't have to get there. But I think it's good to, to get something in here that's binding, and we can replicate that process if we have to. That's where I want to go with it.
My, my question is for the Ways and Means Committee, and maybe Mr. Olson, if the, if the Ways and, Ways and Means Committee can't answer for me. But the couple of numbers, the 9350 came up, and that was through state law or?
That was based on the previous litigation of the 42, I think it was 42 properties, and that was the average lot size of, was it the properties I'm looking at?
All 42 objecting residential property owners.
So it was the average of those?
Yes.
So it was based on the courts of valuation of that property at the time, the dollar amount that they put in, based on that average of square footage? Which in my mind, if we do stay with the, you know, this maximum, that I think I would like to see it at the 9350, so it's all tied together with a court.
I would agree with that. The other question I have comes up to two, two numbers that came up. One being the street width, the width adjustment factor. The average width of a residential street is 36 feet. The average width of a commercial is 38 feet.
Could be 44 feet, could be.
Doesn't matter what it could be.
Right.
Again, with, with Mr. Schaefer saying consistency, that's what we have to be, is we have to be consistent. I mean, is, if, if an industrial complex requests a wider street, there's absolutely no argument with most people that, okay, you're asking for a little bit more to provide a service to your industry. The city would be happy to do that, but you're going to be assessed for that cost. But the average, if the average is 36 feet, you get 36 feet. And if, if the city decides to take on to make 38 feet, un- unasked, I don't see we, why we should assess an industry for that extra two feet when they didn't ask for it. If they can deal with 36 feet, they can deal with 36 feet.
I agree.
Likewise, the tonnage of the street. You know, if the commercial strength is 10 tons, is that ubiquitous? The question I would say is, what was the street that we just laid out on, the street out to the corn plant that we just did last year? Was that 10 ton?
Yes.
Okay. And that gets a lot of traffic. So if that's a uniform commercial street, then we should build that, as opposed to the residential street.
Yes, I agree with you.
That one, that one I can see. But I agree with Councilmember Schaefer. I think that this has to go away exactly, and we have to, if it means a year delay, it means a year delay. But we do it the right way, and then we set policy so that we avoid this kind of discussion in the future, every year.
We don't want to have to be here every, every time, every time we do a project. We don't need to be here. And that's what Jim's been saying forever too. And I mean.
Forever, I agree.
And I think the whole council, I mean, we've, we've all been in chorus on that. The, the decision is which path do we take? And I think that, you know, and I think that with the base work that the Ways and Means has laid out, and the recommendation that came from city administrator, and that conversation about, you know, let's move forward, I, I agree. I think that we're, we're going to get there anyway. We're going to get to an assessment anyway. Let's be proactive, let's get up in front of this thing, let's do it, and let's do it right.
Glenn?
One of the things we want to make sure we don't do is overreact. And we want to make sure that we don't do things that we don't need to just because of one situation. Because we've had the 5,500 limit residential for quite a while, and it's worked. I mean, it, it's worked fairly well. And we haven't had that many commercial industrial problems in the past that we've had to deal with. So, you know, we have a pretty good record so far. And I want the taxpayers out there to know that we've been trying to be efficient and economical as a city government. We don't want to waste your money. And, and Dennis was talking about the appraisal cost. Have we did it per parcel, $5,000 or something, or?
That was, yes, on 12 separate parcels, 10 years.
And, and we've avoided that cost. We've used a maximum, we've had, and had to add appraisals. Otherwise, we'd been wasting a lot of money. And that money doesn't come from us up here, it comes from the taxpayers. And so when we came up with this maximum, the whole idea was, can we come up with a low-cost economical solution similar to the $5,500 situation, where we can save everyone out there, taxpayers' money? Because overall, it, you know, it, the ones that benefit, if we spend all this money on appraisals, are the appraisers. It's not, you know, we want to be fair. First of all, we want to be fair in everything we do, but we also want to try and be economical and efficient in what we do too, and not to waste taxpayer money. And so I, I want the people out there to know that that, we've been trying to do that for years. And, and we've saved lots of money by the methods that we've been using. So like I say, we want to be careful that we don't overreact and start doing things that are expensive and cost a lot of money, and, and the results don't change that much. I, I agree, we want to do it right, and we want to take our time, and we always want it to be fair. But at the same time, you know, it's important for us in city government to be efficient and economical at what we do, and not to waste taxpayer money. And like I say, I, I commend the city staff and, and the council for in the past what we've done. We've, we've tried to save money, and we've tried to do it efficiently and economically. And we're not trying to be unfair to anybody out there. We want to be fair as possible, and that's why we've had the maximums, and that's why we try to come up with the maximum here. So we're, we're trying to do the right thing, and it's one of those things, we will, we'll take our time, and we want to do it right. But again, we want to make sure that we come up with a good solution, that's not going to cost us a lot of money. And so we need to be careful.
Jim?
And I agree with you, Glenn, and I think that with this, this, we've tried to rush this one through, which is, as I've learned in my short time here, government does not move fast. I think being an appraisal will help us come up if that maximum is, because that maximum maybe, well, will work very well. I think if we get this appraisal done, we'll know for sure. We've had one person indicate that they would probably contest it anyway, which would mean we'd have to get the appraisal done anyway. And I agree, we shouldn't appraise these every time. I think we, we set the policy, do this appraisal, then we can work on setting this, delay it one year, like you said, Craig, and then work on setting our policy, and then if it gets challenged in court at that time, so be it. But we, we've done our legwork to make sure we've done everything possible.
So based on the discussion of the council to this point, the options before the council at this point would be to adopt a recommendation on the maximum assessment based on a recommendation from the Ways and Means Committee? Or a alternate action would be to adopt that, that policy and authorize staff to seek out a project assess, appraisal? Or there may be other options, including doing that?
I would think at this time, before we adopt the, the maximum, my, my recommendation, my, and I can make a motion, would be to get the appraisal done, and then take a step back and look and see if that maximum works. So I would make a motion that we go forward with the appraisal on the property at this time.
Property or project?
Project.
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 And, recognize you're making the motion, but it would also include in that motion recognition of the delay in the certification.
Oh, record, yeah, I would recommend the delay in the certification of the assessment, yes.
I'll second that.
So that motion is made by Jim, seconded by Craig. Let me pause for a second. Kyle, do you have that motion? Now, discussion on that motion? If there's more discussion on that motion.
The only thing I would ask then is, so then we get the appraisal, then the staff coming back with a recommendation as to what to do, or do we, does it go back to Ways and Means Committee, or what?
I would say at that point, it goes back to Ways and Means Committee, where we have the appraisal, then the public is involved, because we have public involved, because this is very much a fact. So, and Ways and Means, if I remember correctly, is open to the public. I think you guys had a free discussion. I mean, I can't go, but you guys had a discussion last time, didn't you?
And while it wasn't included, Glenn, in the motion, I think the assumption is that any policy discussion starts at the committee level.
I just wanted to make sure that what the process was going to be.
Yes, absolutely.
Good point. Other discussion on the motion? Now, we'll move to a vote. Motion does pass, one abstention. Now, for those of the city owners that are here that also are involved in the hearing, obviously, that hearing is continued to the, our meeting the 23rd, two weeks from this evening. Likely will be a very short hearing based on this action, so. Does that make sense? Okay, thanks, everyone, for your patience and your work on this. Move then to Gen 9, number 11. Yes? Then you would, I'd ask you to come to the microphone, because we're on cable access television, so. And then, for the record, just give your name, and if you're representing someone.
Pete Helverson, property owner of Pete LLC. Thank you for the time. So to clarify, was it just agreed that there will be a year extension to the assessment role ratification?
That's what the motion was, but there would need to be that action that would occur at that, at that hearing.
At the, at the next meeting is when that would be voted unofficially.
Right, so we have to, you know, that, the meeting is, the hearing is continued.
Yeah.
We have to close that hearing then.
Yeah.
And then maybe there'll be some other public comments at that, which we'll hear.
Okay.
Close the hearing, but based on this action, then the logical action would be the delay of the certification of the.
To review the policy.
Pending the review of the policy.
Okay. Will there be a Ways and Means meeting before then?
There would not be.
Not in the next two weeks.
Not prior to that time, no.
Can I ask a few questions related to this world here? The special policy is.
On the policy, yes.
Okay. How have other road reconstruction projects been financed in, recently in industrial areas?
Glenn, you want to address that?
No, I think that that was a finance question.
I guess my question specifically is, why were special assessments used on this project?
I, I can answer that part.
There.
Yeah, it, it's established as a 429er special assessment project at the outset. So when the project is established, that kind of sets the schedule for all the rest of the process. And that the, it enables the city then to utilize special assessments in the recovery of.
I guess my question is.
All or a portion of that.
Why was that? Do other road reconstruction projects use that?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay. And you just, you just haven't done many road construction projects for a while?
We do them every year, but the last one in the industrial park where you are was 2009.
It's been nine years since one was done?
Yes.
Okay.
In the, in that district. We have had another district since then.
And you've used special assessments there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, maybe I'll save other comments till the next meeting. I guess my, my comment is that the $5,500 limit, I would argue, is not based on legal grounding. My understanding of the law and my research is that any special assessment needs to be limited to the benefit derived from that project, meaning the market value before the project, and then the market value after the project. How much did that project improve the market value of the property? That is the limit, according to the statutes and case law of Minnesota. And so any limit discussion that happens here needs to be grounded in the laws of Minnesota that state. It's the benefit that goes to the property as measured by market value before the project and after the project.
I think all of us up here are aware of that.
Okay. And so this.
Actually, the $5,500 was actually established by the court.
Yes, it was a, my, I would also like a little history on that court case, if there was a case number that could be referenced or something. Because my understanding is that it was a bit of a settlement, an agreement, and that my, my thought is that that $5,500 number has worked, because it's not a big enough number to litigate. It's not worth it, so people don't bother, they just pay it. But if you really read the statutes carefully, it probably doesn't adhere to statutes. But if you really read the statutes carefully, it probably doesn't adhere to statutes, is my, my thought.
Are we getting into a discussion of that now, or is this related to what we're doing now, or not?
It's related to limits for special assessments.
We're not doing the limits now.
Okay.
Again, it is, I just wonder what
But as far as your request, certainly Dennis, you can give the, the reference number in the case law.
Yeah, I'd like to understand that case a little better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Gen 9 number 11, that is the permit for, uh, private use of public streets. Glenn, are you going to start with this?
Yeah, I'll start on this one. Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have a memo before you concerning the placement of, of manufactured homes on the public right-of-way, uh, in anticipation that they will get placed on the permanent foundation sometime soon this fall. Uh, the, the rain conditions have delayed the, uh, projects, but the, and I believe, was the picture of the location of the current storage placed on the council agenda for you to see?
Yes.
Okay. And so, our recommendation was to approve it for the 14 days of the 30-day extension requested. There are representatives of Master Built Homes here in the audience tonight, if you have any questions at all concerning the, uh, the process.
Questions the council has? John, and then Glenn.
Okay, there was a reference to a complaint or a grievance, uh, can you expound on that?
I, we, we don't normally give out the names of anyone who files a complaint or grievance.
Or just, what was the nature of the complaint, more was after?
The, the one was placing them on the public street.
So, just the fact that they were there?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the, Glenn, you may want to, I believe, one of the property owners wants to speak, and I'll recognize you in a second. The, um, you may want to give a little history, and that the, the placement actually started on a different
Sure.
Street, and then it was then moved to another street, and so.
Yes. Uh, so the history here is the, the property owner has several properties in the city at two, at least at two different locations, more than that. Uh, one of the, uh, manufactured homes was to be placed at the intersection of Scott Street and Genesis Street. Uh, just off the edge of it, uh, there was an adjacent vacant lot, um, next to one, and a, uh, another lot adjacent to the property that he had previously sold to another, uh, adjacent property owner. The, the, the two, uh, units of the manufactured home were placed on Scott Street, uh, immediately adjacent, or adjacent to, uh, this property, with an area, uh, remained between them so that you could drive through. Now, for emergency vehicles and things like that, it may have been kind of difficult to do that, especially at night, so we did call it a closed street. We had signs up, we had barricades, we had, uh, cones up around it. And at the time, it was supposed to be, um, relocated onto the foundation. Uh, there were some difficulties in the acquisition of the person doing the excavation for the property, uh, backed out and left, and, uh, he ultimately hired a local contractor to do the excavation. The foundation is installed, and the walls are up, and they're waiting for approval by the, uh, by the manufacturer of the home to place that on that site. Well, since that time, you know, we've had a fairly unreasonable amount of rain. You probably don't want to set those during the rain, or, um, when it's muddy conditions, so, uh, they, they stayed there. Um, subsequent to that, because of the complaints and because of the extenuating, extension of the request for, uh, putting them there, uh, they requested them to be moved to the south end of Iowa State, uh, Drive, or Iowa State Avenue. Uh, adjacent to the owner's property, and, uh, adjacent to one other, uh, home that he was, he worked with that property owner to get the approval to, to park it there. So, they moved that home and an additional, uh, manufactured home to the other site where it's a site where he's going to place the other manufactured home. He al, so that's what he got approval to do, on the public street. Uh, it's a dead-end street next to property owned by, in this case, Mr. Shearholz. Uh, he also then, in addition to that placement of the homes, uh, did, uh, drop off the, uh, foundation materials for the home as well. That was not a part of the, of the permit, and we requested him to relocate that material off the public right-of-way onto his own property, which he did.
How many houses are sitting out here right now?
Two.
And, and they're both on Iowa Street right now?
That's correct. Adjacent to property owned by Mr. Shearholz.
And the foundations are on?
The foundations are in on the one on Scott, Scott Street, and they're on the property on Scott Street.
How come he's, and I build houses, I don't use the public, I've never used the public street to build houses, so I'm confused by this.
Uh, why?
And we've done, and we've done manufactured homes, where you put the basement in the home come, the crane sits on the street, you set them on the foundation, it all leaves.
Right.
Why are these homes been sitting here for three months?
Uh, it's because he ordered them, and they were delivered, and he didn't have the foundations ready to go. It was his timing.
Sharon, you have a comment?
So, I think what, what's happening here is the staff is, is caught in between residents' concerns, which are valid, and a developer's, um, request to develop property. And, so as a city, we have to decide, are we going to support development? At the same time, we received a lot of concerns from residents. So, the first remedy was to relocate. We've gotten tremendous feedback on the first location, uh, and subsequently, we've gotten feedback on this particular location. So, we didn't win, um, the consent of, of the nearby residents by trying to fix it from one location to another. Um, but we were really caught in the middle. It's unfortunate, we had to bring it to council. One of the provisions in the ordinance is, the Director of Public Works shall review the application and approve, conditionally approved, and I refer the application with a recommendation to the city council. So, the last extension, which was from October 5th to October 19th, again, we, as a staff, kind of felt somewhat with our backs against the wall with a request from the developer, uh, is, it was stated to Mr. Shearholz that there was concerns and complaints regarding this particular permit, and it may come to city council. So, this original extension from October 5th to October 19th could theoretically be considered a conditional approval. And now, it's before the council to determine, should it stay as a permit until October 19th, or should the council choose a different date? And if a different date is chosen, we would communicate to Mr. Shearholz to find a solution to, I would assume your decision would be to have him move the, move the structures.
And you've been waiting to invite some input, I'll invite you to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, I am one of the residents, Dr. Heather Morland, uh, that lives on Iowa State Circle, which is in one of the three houses that's occupied. Um, as you can see by the summary, uh, these four, there are four modular units that are sitting there. They have been there since August. Um, these are being located on, as you said, two sites in Marshall. Um, the site that they are adjacent to, there has not been a single ounce of earth moved to begin the foundation for these uni, for this unit, since these were moved here. They have not moved a single ounce of dirt since August. And, you know, these units were originally, as is stated, parked over on Genesis and Scott, where they were blocking access for school buses and emergency vehicles. Uh, the residents there complained, and these units were chased from Scott and Genesis, um, and brought over to, to my neighborhood. Um, it should be pointed out that, yes, Mr. Shearholz does own a significant amount of property in my neighborhood, which begs the question, why can't he store said modular units on his own property, rather than on a public street? Um, I would also add that Mr. Shearholz has not exactly been an upstanding member of the Marshall community. As you are surely aware, he is also the owner of the trailer court, Broadmoor, I believe it is called, and we know of the numerous issues that have gone on there, and the issues the residents are having. I myself had have had issues with him maintaining the lots around my home. I have a lot that he owns behind my home that has not been maintained or mowed for five years. I have begged the city to mow it and send him a bill, to no avail. Um, Mr. Shearholz, when he approached the city to have an extension on the permit last week, he was informed that there had been a potential complaint lodged. Um, the day after he was informed of that, he attempted to bribe all three residents in the neighborhood with cases of wine that showed up on our doorsteps. I would very much like to give mine back, because I don't want it. What I'd like is to have these eyesores moved from my neighborhood. I should also add that he has installed surveillance cameras on these units that are surveilling a public street. So, we now have a private citizen that has installed two surveillance cameras on a public street, and that footage is being relayed to one of his workers. So, every time I drive home, I am under surveillance. I have contacted the Marshall Police regarding this. I was informed by the Marshall Police that this was not legal, but, and I quote, "There's nothing we can do about it." I don't understand why an individual that clearly is not a good steward of the community is continuing to be in, give, being given the benefit of the doubt time and time and time again by the city. Where are the rights of the people that live here and now, right, and live here 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and are good stewards of the community?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I should have asked this before, but the, for the record, I need to have you give your name and your, and your street.
Heather, Heather Morland. And do you mind my address? 1306 Iowa State Circle.
Kyle, will you have that? Okay.
I'm sorry, apologies.
Yep. Okay, so again, the, uh,
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you back to Mr. Shearholz?
Yes. Now, the, um, and you certainly come up to the podium, and as you're coming up, I want to say this is not about an individual, we have the request before us, and the, really the only action is, does it go until, the permit until October 19th? Do we authorize that, or do we change that date?
Yes, that would be my point, Mr. Mayor, that we need to focus on the current situation, which is they're setting at a dead-end street, which nobody drives, because it's a dead-end street. And the cameras are there because they've been vandalized. Uh, we're a little bit in a trashing, Mr. Shearholz is a bad member of the community, which of course, I think he would say is incorrect. But those manufactured homes have been vandalized, hence the cameras, so, to prevent future vandalism of those, uh, facilities. And so, they're setting at a dead-end street. The understanding was, in the exchange of emails, was that he had an extension of the permit till October 19th. That was the first indication. And then later, because of complaints, which I'll tell you, I'm getting sick of complaints, which nobody gets to see. There's really a due process constitutional question on that, and I get this feedback that there's private data, but I don't know if you have a complaint or not, because we don't get to see it. You may tell me you have a complaint, but as far as I'm concerned, it does not exist, because we don't get to see it. And I don't know what the complaint is. They're setting at a dead-end street, not affecting anybody. The permission was extended October 19th. As far as I'm concerned, that was a binding extension. If your staff didn't have authority to do that, that is their problem, but that was the communication. And so, the efforts are underway to get them moved by October 19th. If you jerk the permit early, we're going to have a problem, and it's not going to go down nicely.
Kevin, for the, the record, um, you ought to have you give your name.
Kevin Strop, attorney, representing Mr. Shearholz.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, could I just ask a quick question? Yep. So, council discussion at this point?
I just, uh, so staff did give approval to the 19th?
Yes.
And it wasn't a conditional approval, it was?
No.
Approval?
No, I was going to say, if the permission is granted before a complaint is filed, then that, that discretion to grant the extension rests with the, um, with Mr. Olson. However, this permission was granted after a complaint had been lodged. I think because the complaint had been lodged prior to the extension being granted, the authority rests with the council. Not the exclusive authority, Mr. Olson, but with the council, because with the, with the complaint lodged before, it's conditional. That's my interpretation. That statute talks about a complaint being lodged after the extension. This complaint was lodged before the extension was granted.
So, I think it does, it is in your, your court now to make a decision.
Well, either in to make a decision, or to not make a decision that would change the 19, 10 days. Correct. Yeah, I mean, your decision could be to approve, deny, or Or take no action. Or take, yeah. Kevin, or, yeah.
Craig.
Steve, you had a point.
I'm good until Craig.
Craig?
Thank you. Um, so the question that I have, so we're talking about two separate modular homes, four pieces, correct?
Could you bring up the picture, please?
And, and one of, one pair of these is going on a piece of property that does not have a foundation prepared, correct?
Yes.
Both of them, though, are affected on this 19th order, the October 19th order. So, by the 19th is the one that's got a foundation, is there, is that going on the foundation? And, yeah, you can come up and answer the question, thank you.
And I think as far as the, the answer to that may not make a difference, they're off, they're off the street.
Right, no, I understand that.
David Alvarez, construction foreman. Um, yes, by the 19th, our goal with the timeline, as long as we don't get any more rain, they'll both be set on the foundation. Starting Friday, DNG is going to start digging Iowa State for us. We've already had MMU out there, and they sit there and put in temporary power for us and everything, just because of the delay, because of the rain. And, um, to address the issue with the camera, if I can walk up there, Mr. Mayor? I'll show you the camera only faces in between the two homes.
Right, and, and that won't show up over the TV, so we can't.
But it faces in, in between the two homes, it doesn't face any resident's house, there's no way for anybody to be on camera unless you're walking in between the two homes. So, and the reason we put that up is somebody, I don't know if it was vagrant, homeless people sleeping in it, but a lot of the plastic was cut, and people were walking through the homes. So, to protect our investment, I put up a camera. But it doesn't affect anybody, because nobody's on it unless you're going in between the two homes.
And it's your intention that regardless of the progress of the, of the
Yes, regardless of the progress of the foundation or not, um,
They're off, on the 19th.
People might not like it, it'll be off the street, but if they're not on the foundation, we'll just move them back further onto our property, but they will be by the 19th, one way or another, off the street.
That answer.
I'll clarify one point. Uh, Dennis, you made a point of distinguishing between before and after.
Yes.
And, and in our agenda packet, it says the person complained both before and after.
And I am just focusing on the complaint before the extension was granted, which in my mind is what brings it here to this, to the council.
There was, the complaint was both before and after.
Correct. Okay.
I have a quick question for Rob. Is it illegal to have that camera on that street?
I don't know for sure, I know there's something
Rob, will have you come up and, up to the microphone, and then, do you have anything more to say?
No.
Okay, Rob?
Rob Yan, Marshall Public Safety Director. And I would have to research that. I know that we've had instances where we've had complaints as far as cameras posting towards public, and I believe that that was illegal. But I would, before I made any recommendation, would have to look into it. It's, uh, I'd heard there were complaints, I hadn't heard the issue on the camera before, so I'm not knowledgeable about that unless Attorney Simpson has some Attorney Simpson has some guidance.
Mr. Mayor, question. So you, you didn't receive a complaint about vandalism on these homes?
I didn't. I'm not saying the department...
And we're aware of the complaint of property damage in a field.
Yes.
But we were not aware of a property...
Right.
...damage on the structures? That wasn't turned in to police?
Well, I don't know that either. I wasn't aware of it. In other words, the department gets...
So I'm going to turn back to the council. We could have a lot of discussion on this, and there's a wide range of issues that could be discussed, but I'd want to focus us on, do we allow this permit to exist, to remain in place until October 19th, or do you terminate the council action, the permit, to a different date that would be other than October 19th? That's the only question before the council.
Can I ask a question? So if the extension is agreed till the 19th, is everything going to be done by the 19th? They were talking about whether or not there's a foundation being dug, and, I mean, are there going to be further requests for extensions, or is the 19th adequate?
I think his, the construction manager indicated, it doesn't make any difference. It's off the street by the 19th. Hopefully, it's on a, on a foundation.
That's right. It'll be off the street by the 19th, one way or another, either onto the basement or onto their property. But because that extension is, in our mind, granted, and I think that was the communication, people are making plans on that basis. That's why changing now is a little difficult.
I do have a point, and, Mr. Strop, you could probably stay up here for that one because I'm going to ask this question. Didn't Sheerholz talk to or make contact with any of his neighbors before, before these houses were plopped in the streets in front of him?
I have no idea, and I don't know how relevant that is.
It's very relevant because it's called being a good neighbor. And if you're going to have...
I think these neighbors that are complaining about their houses for Mr. Sheerholz.
No, but if I was going to put something in, into the street in front of me, in fact, I will give a great example. Where I live, the pastor of the church came and said, "Our intention is to put a sign, a lit sign, that may or may not affect your house. We wanted to let you know, in case you have any obligation or some kind of a concern about it, we can talk about it now, and I can show it to you. I just want to let you know because I'm your neighbor."
Yeah, I understand, I understand the comment. Having represented a lot of contractors, doing a lot of projects, I've been to hearings where I've had people 12 miles away from facilities being built complain that we didn't contact them. The question always gets to be, it's an endless circle to keep everybody in the loop and keep everybody happy, and my experience is, lot of unhappiness. You're having trouble in this town getting development done because of all sorts of issues, and we can go into litany of that. This is one of them. I don't think the complaints of citizens always control doing things or are never going to get anything done, because I haven't had a project yet where I don't have somebody complaining, and that's my point.
Sure, I think complaints are fair, but I think also being a good neighbor and asking or letting people know and communicating transparency is a good thing.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of dumping on Mr. Sheerholz today, and he's not here to defend himself. We want a hearing on that. We can have a debate on that whole issue. It's a limited issue today, whether the permit stays for the 19th. In my mind, that was granted, and again, you say you have a complaint. We haven't seen it. My position is, there is no complaint if you don't show it to us. And I'm a little concerned about this not showing stuff.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, there's a...
Well, this is...
Go ahead, Jim, and then I'll recognize you too.
My opinion on this is, our injured department, building department gave it to the 19th. I think we do need to honor that, but as of the 19th, if these houses are not there, I don't say push them back. They need to be craned and set into his lot, not pushed to the back of that street, because pushing off the street is still a public right-of-way. They need to be picked up by a crane and set into one of his lots, or pushed into one of his lots, not pushed back 20 feet because that is still a public right-of-way. They need physically into his lot. And that's what I, you know, we did, and I've, I've seen that point because I've had that same discussion with city officials. They believe they have a permit. They were told they have a permit. It's hard to go back on that. But as of the 19th, if they're not set onto their foundations, they need to be in the master-built lot, which they're saying, that's, it takes a crane to lift them into, that's his problem, not ours. And you said they'll be done on the 19th anyway.
So with that, the...
Farm land is 11 feet away, and I have it, I have it...
That's a street right-of-way back there. Farm land or not, that's still a street right-of-way.
It's only if it's been...
I just looked at your plot, I'm looking at your plots here, it shows...
It's approved, right?
It'll bring us back to order. The, I'm going to recognize you because you haven't had a chance to talk yet, so, and then on...
Hi, Mr. Mayor and everyone. I'm Dr. Heather Reber. I actually own 1400 and 1402 Iowa State Avenue, so they are right adjacent to 1404 Iowa State Avenue. I personally do not have a problem with the home sitting there, knowing that they will be moved by October 19th. If they are not moved by October 19th, I now have a problem because I'm an OBGYN. I have to get out when it snows, and there is nasty snow that gets there and it blocks my street. I only have one-way exit. If it snows and it blocks my street, it's a problem. So I don't have a problem if it's moved by October 19th, but if it's not moved by October 19th, we're going to have some conversation.
Thank you.
So...
Can I clarify something that the council asked?
One clarification, and then, so...
So one of the council members, I think it was you, sir, asked if any of the residents had been notified by Mr. Sheerholz ahead of time. The answer is no. There has been zero communication.
Okay. So the council has, I think, has a good understanding of what the question is before us, that is, do allow the permit that was granted by city officials until October 19th, or to make a change to that permit?
I would make a motion to allow the permit till October 19th. If the house is not moved by then, it needs to be set into the lot at 1404 Iowa State Avenue.
Motion by Jim. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion?
I just, are we saying if it's moved, it's got to be moved there, or could it be moved someplace else? I mean...
Well, legally, we own all that land. We can send it on...
Any, anyone, so we shouldn't necessarily specify which lot it goes on.
...street has not been approved yet, so that's still legally our land, and it's not being craned by the city to make that the right-of-way. So by all legality, that is our property.
So, so what we maybe should say is it should be moved off the street?
It will be moved off the street one day or another.
That's what the motion maybe should be.
I was going to say, my concern in requiring it to be put onto the 1404 property, if the hole's not dug or if they're still working on the foundation, now you got to work around the two half houses sitting there, I think. Well, as a contractor, I work around that all the time. It can easily be done. I mean, I do it for a living. We're digging two holes with 10 feet between the houses. You can do it. It's not, we've misplaced the neighbors. Now, we've come up with a compromise. My other compromise is that we just pull the permit. To me, we've come up with a compromise. I made a motion where there's a compromise. I think it's a good compromise, and I, we have a second, and I think it should be voted on.
Other discussion on the motion?
Well, and I think the clarification is, and I agree about the timeliness and everything, but I think being, to say that it has to be picked up and set on that specific piece of property, because I think the construction manager makes a valid point that they own the other property, and pushing it onto any of those properties does clear the street, and that's really our objective, and I think that's really the fair way to go. So because of that, I'm going to ask that Jim's motion fails, and we'll resubmit a motion.
Mr. Mayor, can you offer an amendment?
Well, and I would be willing to offer the amendment that it, that if, Jim, if you're okay with it, that we take it that it's moved off of the public right-of-way onto their property...
If it's moved off the public right-of-way into one of their lots, I don't want to just shove back 11 feet, is what I'm getting at.
Right.
I think shoving it back 11 feet is kind of a slap in the face of the residents. So I want it moved into one of their lots.
Okay, I'll allow you to clarify the motion. Otherwise, I'll accept the amendment to the motion.
I'll clarify the motion. It needs to be moved into one of their empty lots, not just shoved back 12 feet.
Off of city right-of-way. That's acceptable. Okay. Kyle, you have the...
An understanding of what the direction is.
Other discussion on the motion? Allow Kyle to get the motion posted.
Mr. Mayor, just as a comment, as we're doing this, I think it's important, and I know that a number of the other councilmen have said this all, so that we support our city staff when they make these decisions. Otherwise, we, you know, when we give them the, the authority, we also give them the responsibility, and we need to, we need to respect that, and we need to support that.
Any other discussion on the motion?
And with that, Craig, and I am for development, don't get me wrong, but I also, we have to look out for our residents where these houses have been sitting for a long time. I see both sides, because as a developer, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Strop. There are complaints, but these are legitimate complaints for these folks because they've been sitting there for three months.
Bring us to a vote on motion on the table.
Mr. Mayor, one other comment, just for a point, and that goes to the, what's a complaint? I'm also a public employee, and I receive a lot of complaints, and if I disclose the identity of that complainant, other than the clarity of the complaint, I'm personally responsible for that. That's the Data Practices Act.
Okay. With that, let's move then to Agenda I, number 12. We don't want to get into legal discussions. Agenda I, number 12, is to consider the approval of the employee vision insurance renewal, the EAP program with National Insurance and Health Insurance Benefit renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota through Southwest, West Central Service Cooperative. And I would also, as we introduce this topic, recognize that the council did have a work session where we went in great detail on all of these proposals, in particular, the health insurance one, and gave staff direction to come back with the recommendation, and that's what we have before us this evening. With us tonight, Sheila Dubbs, Human Resource Director for the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. As the mayor just said, this year, we have three benefit programs that are up for renewal, the health insurance, vision insurance, and our employee assistance program. I'll just briefly review tonight the options before you and answer any questions that you may have, as most of this was reviewed at length at our work session. I should also say that our insurance agent, Bill Chukuski, is also with us again this evening. He is able to answer any additional questions you have related to the renewal information from Southwest, West Central Cooperative and the Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical Insurance Plans. So with that, I would like to begin with the vision insurance renewal. The city currently offers a voluntary vision insurance policy to employees through National Insurance Services. The vision plan is offered by Emeritus Life Insurance Corporation. We offer a high plan and a low plan to employees with respective premium rates that are in your packets for a single, single plus one, and single plus two or more dependent plans. National Insurance Services has offered us the same plan as last year with no rate change and for a rate guarantee of two years, so 2019 and 2020. The plan rates are shown in your attachments. There is no fiscal impact to the city for these vision plans. This is a voluntary benefit where the employee, if they elect the plan, pay 100% of the premium. So I will be recommending approval of that benefit renewal.
Questions on that recommendation? Not a certain motion?
I saw move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve for the two-year renewal of the vision plan with National Insurance Services. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes.
The next plan renewal is for our employee assistance program. Our current carrier is provided through our health insurance carrier, Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Minnesota. At the work session, we did review the usage history with the council and walked through the current premium for the benefit, which, from last year, we are seeing a slight increase in the cost to the plan offered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield. At present, this premium is split 50-50 between the city and the employee. The company that provides our long-term disability and vision insurance is offering us EAP services at no cost to the city. It would be a savings to the city of $1,125 annually. This EAP program under National Insurance Services would cover all full-time employees, firefighters, and part-time police officers. There would be no family coverage for full-time, for full-time under the, for, excuse me, for full-time employees' family under the plan, the employee only would be covered, so that is the only significant change. However, given our EAP usage history, we are recommending that the council move to this no-cost option with National Insurance Services.
Questions for Sheila?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an employee assistance program with the National Insurance Services as recommended.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
Sheila, for historical purposes, and I, we know the usage of the EAP over the past several years, has there ever been any incident where family members have used the EAP in the past 10 years, to your knowledge?
Well, we haven't had the AP that long, but the information that we receive is in aggregate form, so I don't believe they separated out from employee to family member to try to maintain confidentiality.
Sure.
So I could certainly try to get that, but we've had no usage this year or last year. We are doing extra education with our employees through open enrollment meetings as well as separate meetings. For instance, we met with the fire department about a month and a half ago and reviewed the service with them, so we are trying to get more information out to our employees on how they can use that plan. But with this option, it is for the employee only.
The reason I ask is because, God forbid, you know, insurance is something we always want to have, but hope we never even need to use it, and the same thing with an EAP. If one of our firefighters, our policeman, or city worker was killed or traumatized somehow and it affected their family, we'd want to make sure that the family had a venue to receive the help that they needed.
We would certainly try to work with them and bring them into the community resources that we have available.
Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion does pass, and then the third item is the health insurance renewal.
Thank you. The city currently offers consumer-directed, high-deductible health care plans through Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Minnesota. Again, we reviewed during the council work session the renewal rates from the Southwest, West Central Cooperative for 2019, and our renewal reflects a 15% increase. In your background materials, I did provide a summary of the rate increases dating back to 2011. That is the year that we moved to the high-deductible plans. I also provided a three-year summary of the premium rates in the background memo. The other attachment, the plan options attachment, the first slide shows our current health plan premiums and the cost share between the city and the employee. We did review that at length at the work session. The following slides show each of the plan options that we reviewed at the work session, A, B, and C, with updated cost estimates, and those updated cost estimates remove the retirees, the library employees, and the public housing employees. The city does not contribute towards the cost of those, so those have been removed from the estimates. You'll notice that we also included a plan option D in the slides at the direction of the council during the work session. Each of these include, at the very top of, of the worksheets, how they were designed and the costs, the estimated costs of each. At the work session, staff proposed option C, which has an increase of $93,959.96, and that was a 50-50 cost share between the city and the employee on the premium increase. And then we needed to balance out so that the employer was putting the same amount into the plans across the high deductible and the low deductible plan. So the HSA and VIBA contributions were lowered on the lower deductible plan, and because there was no HSA contribution into one of the plans on that side, we had to increase the family premium on the HSA plan. And the goal with that plan design was to keep the premiums at the 50-50 cost share, making the premium affordable to the employee while still contributing to the HSA and VIBA accounts, though at a lower level on the lower deductible plan. At the work session, council provided direction to staff to provide an estimate of the cost where the lower of the two deductible plans was eliminated. That is shown in option D, which has an estimated cost increase of $77,026. The total premium in option D was reduced by the co-op approximately 2%. Those rates are only effective in option D with the elimination of the lower deductible plan. So on the final slide, you can see the breakout of the estimated cost for option C and option D by fund. Also shown on that slide are what we believe to be the three... Also shown on that slide are what we believe to be the three impacts to employees should the council approve option D, and that is that employees would be required to elect the higher deductible plan. The benefit of the fourth quarter carryover would not be available with a higher deductible plan. And there would be a prescription drug formulary change from FlexRx to GenRx, which basically means that the employee has substantially less access to name-brand drugs under the higher deductible plan. I did list option D as the recommendation due to the fact that council requested staff to explore this option, and it had a lower estimated cost to the city. If the council does wish to approve option C, that is listed in the alternative recommendation on your screens. Either I or Bill can certainly answer any additional questions that you might have about the renewal.
Questions the council may have. Thank you, Sheila.
So overall, if we go with option D, it's going to save $17,000 for the city?
That is correct.
And I thank you for putting this together. And, you know, we requested it, and I'm glad we could see the comparison between option C and option D. Thank you.
John?
And looking at this, obviously, there is a cost savings. It comes out to, it's about, I'd estimate about a 1% on the overall premiums by eliminating the lower deductible plans. Now, you mentioned that the prescription formulary change, FlexX to the GenX. I guess expand on that a little bit more, so I understand just what that change is.
Okay. I'll do my best, and if I need Bill to come up and help me with that, I will. Okay. Thank you. The drug formulary for the GenRx includes about 200 or so of the name-brand prescription drugs with a heavier weight on the generic medications. The FlexRx has about 400-plus name-brand drugs with, I don't even know how many of the generic. I think it's over 1,000. You want to expand on that?
Yes.
I didn't do a lot of research on that piece.
Bill Chukuski, your health insurance agent. That is accurate, and the difference in the formulary is it doesn't mean that if a patient is on a FlexRx medication that they can't continue. It's just that Blue Cross Blue Shield is going to work with them and their physician to try other prescriptions through what they call step therapy to see if other things will work. The whole goal is to try and reduce the cost of prescription drug use with the high-expensive medications. So it doesn't mean that they, you know, that they can't take it. It just means that they're going to be directed toward the generics more and that they're going to have to be, you know, get more involved with their doctor on the medications.
Related to that, we, right now, I think 76 employees are under GenX plan.
Correct.
And only eight are under the Flex. So most of our employees are already under that plan.
Right.
Any other questions? John?
Has any of this been discussed with the employees, or is this strictly staff?
Only in our management meetings has it been discussed. It has not been rolled out to any employees yet.
Other questions, councilwise? If not, you do have the recommendation.
I make a motion that we accept the plan D.
I'll second it.
Jim, seconded by Glenn. Discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We had a request earlier, as we move to the next agenda, and we had a request earlier for Agenda I have number 16 to be considered as soon as feasible in our agenda. So with the acceptance of the council, I would like to now move to Agenda I have number 16. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
So Agenda I have number 16 is the Merit Center Driving Track Phase Two to Consider the Awarded Proposals for Engineering Services with Graff USA Inc. Glenn Olson, Director of Public Works, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Lee Kapi from Grave Engineering. And if Lee, if you would come up to the podium. We did a request for proposals for engineering services for the extension of the Merit Center track. There were two proposals received. It was reviewed and scored by three separate individual, four separate individuals, and they were the highest point getter in the process. So we asked them to put together a proposal for this meeting, and they did so under the review as well of Mr. Simpson, our attorney. There were some things, significant things that were changed in the standard document agreement, and we're ready to go forward at this time. So I think Mr. Kapi would like to speak with you for just a minute.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Lee Kapi. I'm with Grave. I'm a registered professional engineer, civil engineering background. One of the things that our company has had the fortune of doing is designing some other test tracks for some other clients, three of them that we put into our packet, and I think that's why we scored well. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. We're very excited about this project and working with the city and the Merit Center folks. We had a chance to meet with staff today and go out and visit the site, and it looks like a great project that'll be a good benefit for the city going forward. We got to look at what we can accomplish here in this next phase. We understand that the city has a budget to work with, but if we're authorized to start work on the project, we'd be starting immediately, or as soon as possible anyway, to get the design done, preliminary design, to come back before you here in November with kind of an engineer's estimate of some different alternatives and stuff so that the city council can make a decision as to which alternatives to pursue. And then the final plans would come before you in December. They'd be bid kind of over the holidays and early in 2019. Bids would be due by January 15th, and Mr. Olson and I have talked about that as being real good timing because the contractors should be hungry and hopefully get good prices on it. Any questions at all for me tonight?
Any questions?
Maybe one comment is that you can see that the recommendation for award is contingent upon execution of the deed grant agreement and required documentation. My understanding as of today was the documentation has been completed and submitted, and we are allowed to go forward with the expenses on the project at this time. If there's any other information other than that, I'd take it, but my understanding is now it's far enough along where it can be worked on.
Very good. Any other questions? If not, thank you for your proposal. Do you have an enterated motion?
I move that we accept the proposal for engineering from Grave USA Incorporated and give them the recommendation to move forward.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
I think, Mr. Mayor, that this is a project that needs to go forth to maximize that merit center to its full potential, start generating some revenue. So I think, you know, we've seen not a lot of revenue, a lot of great room out there, a lot of great property, and we've put it there. We should maximize it and start using it.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move us to a vote.
Who's running this show, anyway?
It didn't want to recognize me, but now it did, and that motion does pass. I would also thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I would also add, related to this, on October 25th at 11:30 in the morning, there is a ceremonial groundbreaking that will take place on the site. With that, we'll move back to Agenda I have number 13. Agenda I have number 13, Consider the Revocation of GM Tobacco's Tobacco License. Dennis, are you handling this?
Yes.
City Clerk Kyle Box received notification from the Department of Revenue that in July of this year, there was a confiscation of material from GM Tobacco, confiscation basically of vaping juices and long-cut tobacco that had not been acquired through the proper tobacco vendor way that they're supposed to purchase tobacco. It's highly regulated, and apparently, these were purchased over the Internet without having the appropriate tobacco stamps, the appropriate purchase. Those items were confiscated. The owner has 60 days to object to that confiscation. No objection, no contesting of that confiscation was undertaken by the property owner. City received notice on September 25th that tobacco taxes had not been paid on the confiscated materials. The unpaid taxes exceed $2,000 in value. The Department of Revenue and the city attorney's office, along with the city clerk, are recommending that the license to sell tobacco be revoked. One of the requirements of the tobacco license or the permit as issued by the city marshal is that all state and federal laws be followed. Failure to pay taxes is not complying with Minnesota law. So it's a recommendation to revoke the GM tobacco license.
Yes.
Dennis, this is an apparent evasion of both federal and state tax. Is that right?
I don't know about the federal. I know state, but I'm assuming if you're not paying the state, you're probably not paying the feds either.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dennis?
What percentage of the state tax does the city marshal?
I do not know. I don't, Kyle, we, I don't know what we, what, if anything, we collect.
So why doesn't the state just pull the license?
We license locally. Yes, yep.
Any other questions? Now, do you have the recommendation to revoke, make a motion to revoke the license?
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by, who seconded? By Craig. Discussion?
If they comply and pay all their dues and fines, do they re-imply for license?
They could reapply, yes.
Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda I have number 14. Agenda I have number 14 is the Batum Minus chip sealing of various city streets. We have change order to consider as well as the acknowledgement of the final pay request. Request number two with Caldwell Asphalt noting that the change order is a reduction in cost.
I'll make a motion to revoke this.
Motion by Jim, seconded by. If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote.
Me.
Motion passes. Agenda I have number 15. Is the Runway Mill and Overlay Project, the acknowledgement of the final pay request number two with Dunnay. Glenn, anything to add on this?
No, nothing to add. Reconsidering the approval.
What's the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by David, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda I have number 17. Agenda I have number 17, Commission for Liaison reports. The Regional Development Commission will meet this Thursday evening. Fire Relief Association didn't meet this month. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Library Board met yesterday, and just a few things. I know that there was some questions previously in, I believe, one of the work sessions about, you know, some of the, the way that the funds are managed there, and I just wanted to make a couple of points that there's been a lot of work since Michelle came on to bring a lot of the accounts into order and to have our budget more accurately reflect what we do and to finish out the building projects and to do some of the other capital things. And so with the way that she's been able to work with getting our public, our utilities bills more in line and the HVAC systems working and just becoming more efficient, a lot of those dollars that we save there, we're able to actually go to things that contact our public that come into the library. They're able to pick up four new computers, and those were all for the public. The staff have about 10-year-old computers that they're continuing to work with. They've also added a fifth wireless access point in the library. The technology is changing pretty quickly, and I commend them for doing a really good job of, you know, keeping up with that. And that, just the number of the dollars that are saved is by repurposing some of the budget items, you know, like the utility savings and other places. And that savings has allowed us to do the staff increases and kind of do the better service without actually adding anything to the budget. So I'm pretty proud of where that library board has been working. You know, it's been a real pleasure for me to be on that board now for my fourth, you know, finishing out my fourth year there. And I think that that facility and the other libraries in Lyon County have come a long way, and I really look forward to continuing to serve that and watching the efforts and the progress that are made there. There's a lot of really good people on that board, and I really appreciate the work that's being done there and the way our community and our county's being served. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Could I just say that it is really nice to see the library operating so well? I mean, we've had some tough years with the library in the past, and we've got a change in personnel and on the board and in the administration of the library, and everything is working out really well, and I'm pleased to hear that.
Yeah, and I think that the, it's the community. I think the whole, it's just really well-received. And I mean, and it's not done yet. There's still more work to do, and they're looking at that, and they've tried a number of programs with the youth reading program and some of those. And I think we've been a little bit surprised by, you know, how some of that maybe isn't going as well, but they're realistic about looking at that and adjusting and bringing in other programs. But there's a lot of cooperation and participation that's gone on outside of the library proper. So they brought the library out to the community, along with bringing the community into the library, and I think that's really key. There's a really positive community attitude there, and, you know, I'm not a big library guy, but yeah, I know it's a big shock, but I really appreciate the, being on the board and with the work that they do there. It's just, it's refreshing to see that and the attitudes and the excitement that goes on there. I think that it's just been a real positive piece for Marshall and the surrounding county, so I'm grateful for that. Thanks, Glenn. That's a nice comment.
Thank you, Greg, for your efforts on there. You've been a very good member liaison from the city there and recognizing also that the board and especially the chair.
Yeah, yeah, and our thoughts and prayers are with our chair right now because I know that he's fighting some pretty tough personal battles, and he's done a lot to bring it forward and, you know, that really needs to be recognized, and I hope people keep him in his, in their thoughts and prayers.
My committees did not meet.
The planning commission, I believe, meets tomorrow, and then the housing commission meets next week.
Mine did not meet, but just a reminder that there is an EDA tour being scheduled for November 2nd, and you're all invited. You need to sign up with Terra Hanke, and there's a trace of three times out there, and bus tour to just take a look at all the projects and really see what is going on in Marshall.
Thank you, John. David?
The police advisory board met last night to update the eligibility hiring roster and also to bid a fond farewell to Chief Yan, his last meeting with us after these many years of service.
And Jim?
Mine did not meet.
Well, then, Agenda I have number 18, council member individual, Jim, let's start your end.
Tonight, we had a good discussion about development, and that's where, as developers, as a developer myself, we need to be conscious for neighbors. I mean, I don't think we need to pick on, I don't think developers picked on, but we do need to be conscious of our neighbors as we do these because these are, you know, projects that take up a lot of space. Glenn, I, you know, I want to say, as a city council member, we should always back staff, like you said, Greg. You made a decision, and we need to.
back the staff. Like you said, Greg, you made a decision, and we need to stick with those decisions.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I think that it's going to work out well as we work on this, but with mobile houses like, not mobile houses, but with modular, thank you. We do need to be careful where they get placed because they are big structures that are sitting on a street. So, but other than that, I have nothing.
Jim, David?
Nothing now.
John?
Nothing.
Greg?
Nothing.
Steve?
I'm kind of piggyback on Councilmember Lizinski's. I think that when staff make these decisions, we really need to focus on time. I mean, the first complaint that this came by was August sometime, and so, we need to give reasonable and prudent guidance and follow-up. Really pay attention to that because if, what Dr. Morland had said about, you know, weeds being complained to the city and absolutely nothing is done, that bothers me a little bit, you know. I've not experienced that because I've brought a couple of issues with sidewalks and trees and things like that, and they're taken care of right away. But everybody has a valid complaint, and they need to be looked at and followed through so make sure that things get done. And then, you know, as far as the legality of things, that's for council of the city to decide and look into the laws of that to make sure that we're following the letter of the law. But, yeah, I think that we need to, development is very important. We need to keep it going, but being a good neighbor is good. We do things for ourselves and develop it for ourselves. And part of that on the weeds, I know, I believe out there, Glenn, don't they probably hate that?
Yes.
So, that maybe there needs-
But not this specific property that she was talking about.
Oh, that could be.
Generally, yes, it is mowed, but that north area from her house-
Yeah, the origin is I says I have a property next to farm where it's hate, so I know it gets mowed three times a year. So, there may be some education with-
Weed whipping is more the issue there. It's around posts and things like that.
Well, not ten, it's just communication. And some of it's communication because I said there, I own a house and other people next to property that gets hate. So, it's mowed three times a year. So, communication and education, too. Anything else, Steve? That's all. Thank you.
I have nothing.
Okay, then we'll move on then to Agenda I of number 19. Staff report, Sharon.
Two separate meetings today, two separate instances where people were upset and pointing fingers, and I'm all for communication and kind of a follow-up to Councilman Meister and Lizinski. I pride myself on personal relationship skills. It does make it a little bit more difficult on mutual respect when that occurs, but we'll keep working through it. So, that's my report.
Okay, thank you.
One for the team today.
We thank you for that. Thank you, Sharon.
And I should have said this in my report. We should commend Sharon Hansen, our city administrator, for the completion of the twin city marathon.
Awesome. And she's still walking. And she did it in four hours and 17 minutes. It'd taken me four days and 17 hours. Did she qualify for Boston?
That'd be driving.
No. Boston's like three hours and 40 minutes or something like that, so.
Next year.
Congratulations. Glenn, did you run a marathon? No? Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to mention that because of the rain, you can expect to see some requests
for project extension for time from all of our contractors that are working. So, I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Glenn. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It seems like there's a lot of just big-picture items hanging out there right now, housing issues right now. Been meeting with Rodmore Valley Association, Sunrise Court issues, just while there's not much the city can do at this time, just trying to educate the residents about housing code issues and what level the city can be involved, which leads to the, you know, development of a rental code at the request of Councilmember Bear Cole. We are gathering information. We have met as staff to discuss rental code issues. Where do we go with that? And the rest of the stuff, a lot of time with ways and means, special assessments, big-picture stuff that needs to be resolved. EDA, looking forward to a tour to see what's going on out there. But I think all staff, Glenn, myself, and Sharon kind of took one. We all took one for the team this morning. A lot of finger-pointing as to failure to manage construction projects properly from the city standpoint. You weren't even on board at that time, Sharon, regardless. Okay. Then, we'll move then to Agenda I of number 22. You have the administrative reports, including the administrative brief note that there was a omission of the city attorney's portion of his prosecution summary. So, that is as a handout. It'll be added to the website.
Yes.
Agenda I of number 23 is the information items, including the building permits. The upcoming meetings are listed in Agenda I of number 24, which brings us to Agenda I of number 25, to Consider Adjourning. I would enter a motion.
So, second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move
We'll continue on.
We'll have a voice vote. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we adjourn.